Thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our special finance meeting. Today is Monday, November 30th. My name is Andrea Schott, the Council President and organizer for our virtual meetings. Before we begin, we'd like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members in press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a council member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website. Although we will not have public speaking tonight, you could sign up to our council meeting tomorrow by emailing Elisa Tinty, or you could submit written comments by emailing elisa tinty@kingston-n-y.gov, or by dropping them off at the Dropbox located outside the side doors. We also encourage you to reach out to the committee chairs or your awards representative at any time. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to the following number: 845-594-6120. Please note that phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. The number again to text is 845-594-6120. As the organizer, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have an attendance chair, Alderman Doug Coop; members, Alderman Steve Shabett; Alderman Todd Davis; Alderman Michelle Hirsch; and Alderman Rennie Scott Childress; non-voting council members, Alderman Jeffrey Ventura-Murrell; Alderman Patrick Riley; Alderwoman Rita Worthington; and Alderman Don Tollerman; city staff, we have City Elisa Tinty; engineer John Schultheis; comm. controller John Tuwe; ward council Dan Gardenstein; and city assessor Jim Baker. Thank you for your patience during these difficult times. And on behalf of the Common Council, I wish you'd turn the floor over to the Chair, Alderman Doug Coop.
Okay. Thank you, President Schott. We've had some late submissions, so let me just kind of summarize the agenda that I have, and I hope it's complete. There are five items. One, approval of the city's 2021 sewer fund transfer that John Tuwe can walk us through. Number two is the North Street involving John Schultheis, city engineer. There are two items from the corporate council, one of which requests for an executive session, the other one is for sale of 40 Conley Street. And fifth, there's a budget transfer of $7,100 from wastewater treatment plant, which by my omission was not acted upon last month. So we'd like to get that through so we can vote on tomorrow night. So moving back, the first item is the approval of the city's 2021 sewer fund budget. And John, John Tuwe, the backup that came with this communication is from the Water Department involving unpaid water charges and sewer totals. And I'm not... That's really not the 2021 sewer fund budget, so I'm a little bit confused by this. Can you clarify that?
Sure, Doug. Yeah, that's not really an accurate description of what that communication is. What the actual communication is, is the annual re-levy of unpaid water and sewer charges onto the 2021 city tax bills. A similar communication comes over from the Water Department every year. And the Common Council authorized the re-levy.
So we're really being asked to opine and act upon the Water Department's assessment of unpaid water and sewer charges. Is that correct?
Onto the 2021 bills, correct, tax bills.
Okay. So I don't have a... I have the figures: $339,117 for unpaid water charges and $429,539 for unpaid sewer totals. But I don't have a committee report defining those things.
If you want, Doug, I can do one up for the Water Department and send it over to you.
Okay. Are you going to send it to the committee, or what?
Yeah, I'll send it to the whole committee. But essentially, what you're asking for is someone to make a motion to authorize the re-levy of water and sewer charges totaling $782,663 onto the city's 2021 tax bills.
All right. So if you can send that to us, then we can ask for a motion and perhaps vote on it.
Why can't we ask for a motion now? He just read what the committee report is. So he just read what it is. So all you have to do is ask for a motion a second. You do all that, and then...
Hold it, Tony. I'm trying to... Are you sending it, John?
Yep, I just have to write it up.
Okay, just a moment. I don't see it yet.
No, I still have to write it, Doug. If you want someone to make that motion, then they can make the motion.
Sure. So we're asking for a motion to levy unpaid water charges of $339,117 and 35 cents, and to levy unpaid sewer totals of $429,539 and 37 cents. I've lost video here.
Doug, it's Michelle. There's fees involved on top of that, so the totals are higher. If you look at the letter in the packet.
I've lost video here.
Doug, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Michelle just had a question saying that there was... Well, Michelle, can you just repeat that?
Doug, if you have your packet for tonight, there's a letter from Judy Hansen laying out the charges. The charges you stated were pre-fees, administrative fees. So the grand total for sewer and water to be levied by the City of Kingston would be $782,663.
That's right. The total charges for sewer and water.
Right.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we adopt that.
Okay, motion by Michelle. A second. Again, I can't, I don't have video, so identify yourself.
Rennie has his hand up.
Who?
Rennie.
Okay. A second. Ready, seconds. Is there all in favor? Aye. I am one. Can anyone count the votes?
Yep, Rennie is an aye. Steve is an aye. Doug is an aye. Tony is an aye. That's...
Five-zero. Okay. I'm still trying to get back on video. I don't know what the problem is here.
We can see it.
Okay. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Dan.
Okay. The next item is from engineering regarding the finding of the length of the North Street. John, you want to bring us up to date on that? John Schultheis?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the committee. This is a follow-up to the process that we've been going on, I think, since about September now, going through the steps to have a finding that the section of North Street is surplus and should be vacated. The city should give up its property interests in the section of North Street. If you recall, a public hearing was held in the beginning of November, and at that time, I think there was only one speaker from the public, and that was the requester from Scenic Hudson, which is also doing business as Quarry Waters, speaking in favor of the request. There was a public comment period as well, during which time the public had the opportunity to provide their comments on this proposal. And no comments from the public were received during that time. So tonight, we are here asking for the Common Council to approve this. I believe this will be the last step to approve the finding that the street is surplus and authorize the sale. Of course, this project is related to the Empire State Trail and the Hudson River Brickyard Trail, which is now under construction and nearly done. So as part of this transaction, we also will, we expect to receive back from Quarry Waters an easement covering the route of the trail in its constructed position. So that's a brief overview. I'm available for questions, and I know other staff members are also on the phone, along with representatives from Scenic Hudson and from, I believe, the Palisades Interstate Park Commission are also here for your questions. So thank you, and let me know any questions. Thank you.
Steve Shabett? Steve Shabett?
Thanks, Doug. Yeah, I think this is a really good use of this property down there. As I said, I really can't envision us using this for any purpose whatsoever. I mean, I think this is a good idea. I know it's really not a topic for tonight, but at some point, I want to bring parking for the trail, you know, so that we can attract some business down there. I know for the trail, the parking is out in the town of Ulster as it stands right now, but I think there is enough property down there that we really have to address it and make sure some of this business that we're going to attract is going to stay within our city limits and, you know, within the ronde out area down there. I know it's really not part of the deal, but I'm certainly in favor of turning the property over, I think.
Thank you, Steve. John, can you comment? Sue Cahill was tasked with looking into certain aspects of this. Can you kind of summarize what they were? She sent out a very complete email on this, but it might be helpful to the committee if you could summarize what she found out.
Yeah, so the city planner is tasked with determining if there are any current or future uses of the right-of-way, and you can read her memo to that effect. So her memo asks the basic questions, you know, the three basic questions that are presented there. Do you see any need for the City of Kingston to retain any or all of this present street right-of-way? Question two, are you aware of any future use, which would require an easement or use of an easement to successfully complete an installation? And question three, are there any issues of access or maintenance for either existing or proposed utilities that will need to be accommodated? And if you've read through her memo, you see a thorough discussion of those questions.
Okay, I would ask if Heather, or Matt Shook, or Pam Richardson have anything they want to add to this discussion to this point? Heather?
Hi, then. Good evening, Alderman, Alderwoman, President Schott. Thank you for letting us participate tonight, and I'm also be happy to hand off my answer to Matt Shook as well. So I guess just to respond to the current questions that were brought up, certainly, we see the permanent easement as, you know, a benefit that allows, you know, great recreational access along the shoreline of the Hudson River, that the right-of-way is still within upland areas. So this new easement will really expand upon the public's ability to access the shoreline within the city boundary. The easement itself will also allow, it's not just a corridor, it's also shaped to allow for future overlooks to be developed and additional amenities to be placed or to be placed in the future. And of course, the design of the trail construction was anticipated a need for vehicle access or emergency access. So there is that ability to sustain vehicle access in that regard. And I guess a request also considers the alignment of the trail when it was first laid out just before construction, that it's actually protective of sections of North Street that have now become streams or wetlands and/or otherwise unusable. So to that regard, this easement actually allows protection of those areas that are now unique and make up a whole complexity of ecological inhabit benefits to the site as a whole. So in that regard, they can now be protected with the abandonment and when there's no further development required for those areas. So, and also to Alderman Shabett's question, we certainly want to, at this moment, this is going to be the first improvement to that property in decades. And in speaking with Green Line members a few weeks ago, it was determined that we would really promote Kingston Point Beach as kind of the trail and the main access point, even though there is a constructed parking lot at the north end. That wouldn't be promoted as much as the parking or at all. And instead, the parking at the Kingston Point Beach area would be promoted as the access point, and which would then draw attention from visitors, regional and local, through Kingston and through the ronde out area, and attracting that business that's desirable. And certainly, for future phases, as we evaluate all the conditions on the site, all the access points for future phases of the larger park and the larger site, we would certainly be in step with, as much as Scenic Hudson can be, with coordination and collaboration with all the stakeholders and the community at large to be a part of that process. So that answers some questions. I'll defer to Matt Shook for any additional comments he may have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Matt? Hi, everyone. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Just for, since I haven't been at one of these meetings, I work with the Palisades Interstate Park Commission, and we are an affiliated, you know, agency with New York State Parks that will be the owner of the park once it comes into state hands. And we've been working closely with Scenic Hudson and with Mayor Noble to, you know, make the first plans to figure out what we're going to do here. And one of the first things that we need to do before we move forward in any way is to figure out a management and maintenance agreement with the City of Kingston for the Empire State Trail. So, you know, in terms of the access to the trail for maintenance, you know, we're going to be figuring all those details out. So there's going to be opportunities for the city before anything really gets done to put in their, you know, input and make sure that we know what you need there. And we do that a lot with our neighbors and with our partners. So, you know, if there's questions or if there are issues that come up, please feel free to send them our way so that we know them beforehand and can build that in. The other thing I wanted to say is that this is the very, very beginning of planning for this park, and we anticipate a very limited, you know, opening at the beginning. We had intended to do more, but with the Bond Act and with everything being as it is, the budget, there's just not funding at the moment to do very much on that site. So we do intend to open it and keep it open to the public and work with our partners to make sure that it is open. But, you know, there is going to be, again, ample opportunity to discuss where parking should go, where access should go, how the best way into the park is going to be over time as we develop the park out, you know, more fully. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we expressed, you know, how important we feel that the relationship with Kingston is going to be at this park. You know, we have managed the Senate House there for a long time, and I know that, you know, our staff has always, you know, said how helpful and good that relationship has been. And because it's so far away from many of our properties, I think even more so at this site, it's going to be really important that we work together to make it, you know, as good a park and as, you know, accessible and inclusive as it possibly can be. So I'll leave it there and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you to Matt and to Heather. Michelle, Michelle Hirsch?
Hi, this is Alderman Hirsch. Thank you, Heather and Matt, for being here tonight. I must say, I'm excited about the project, especially if this trail can be opened during the winter. I think it's really important for people to get outside this winter. But I think the question is, because it's a finance meeting, and we're, you know, abandoning the street, what is the value of the street, which is not something you guys can answer, but, you know, Daniel Baker, he is our assessment person.
Dan? Was that a question addressed to Dan, Michelle?
Yes.
Daniel Baker? You're muted, Dan.
My apologies. So I submitted to Chairman Coop, President Schott, the my valuation report, which is, has a, I believe, November 12th evaluation date on it.
Yeah, I did forward it to the whole council, so it'd be in your emails. I sent it out last week.
I can resend it if you would like.
Are you saying, Dan, there's a document that we should have before we can vote tonight?
I sent out the further code and asked the assessor to determine a value of the property under certain protocols, and I submitted that to you. If anyone doesn't have it up, I can email it right now.
Okay, I just found it. So, but it wasn't in the packet, so...
Yeah, it's not in the packet. Is that a document we need, Dan, in order to vote on this?
You know, I think it's something you definitely should consider, you know, what we've...
Okay, are you...
It's definitely something you can consider when you're, you know, you're taking your vote. What we've found is that there is a value to the street, and there also is a value to that easement we are going to be receiving back. And we think that they have a very similar exchange value, and the numbers do back that up.
But the committee report I have from you, John Schultheis Engineering, says the estimated financial impact is zero. So do we need this document at the present time?
The document is something that the process calls for between the city assessor and the city planner, how to provide reports, which have been forwarded. Dan included, Doug, you on the original, and then I forward it to whoever who wasn't on that original. So it's definitely something that the council, the committee and the council should be aware of and look through. It's, you know, part of the league to take.
So can you send this to the Alderman, Dan?
Sure.
Andrea, can I resend it to you? And then maybe you can re-forward it on, because I don't have...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Or I could actually just find it, too.
It'd probably just be easier if I just send it here again. It is a large file. Let's see here what I can find.
I got it, Dan.
Okay. And Doug, to Andrea's point, this document is called for in the code. It's just part of the process, just like Sue's determination is and John's involvement. The code, the 355 in the city code, Section 61, calls for all of us to participate, and we have certain assignments during this, you know, liquidation process of a city street, and we fulfilled those. And that's what that document is for.
Okay.
My apologies. I just want to say that, you know, we were, we, like, it was a holiday weekend, and we didn't, this didn't get sent to us till Friday, so...
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Andrea, you are sending this to us now?
I already sent it.
It's a large file, so it may take a moment.
Yeah.
Andrea, this is Rita Worthington. Can you hear me?
Rita, yes, we hear you.
Okay, my apologies. I'm on the road driving. That's why I'm not on camera. But that report, are you sending that to all of the older folk, or are you just sending that to the committee members?
I sent it to the full council.
Okay. And because I can't look at it because I'm driving, is that something, the value, can we, could we make that audible, or is that, or we cannot, or is that just for us to look at ourselves?
Sure. You know, I came up with a value of $250,000. It's roughly a six-inch parcel.
$250,000, did you say?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
$250,000?
Correct, Doug. Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Ready? Question ready?
Yes. So, Dan, you were saying that then there would be a concomitant value of the easement. And if I read your report right, you said you wouldn't necessarily be able to quantify that? Is that the same thing as the value of... Is that the same thing as the the value of the public use or those two different numbers?
Those are two different items. Um, two, two different ideas. Um, the easement itself, um, there is, um, an appraisal that is out there, um, that the, um, Corey Waters and Sina Hudson has produced from an appraiser uh, that talks about the value of that easement. He does come up with the fee simple, um, uh, value of the underlying property of that easement. We would be receiving an exchange of $27,726 an acre. Um, that's a 9.06 acre easement. Um, with that, um, he, there is something called an easement, um, to fee simple ratio. And, um, Mr. Dewan, who wrote the appraisal, you know, he's valuing that, that, uh, easement in a different timeframe than what I'm valuing the, um, future use of of the street. So the number is a little bit different, but when you use an easement to value fee simple ratio of what I feel is appropriate about 10% reduction and 90% fee simple easement to fee simple ratio, you come up with about $24,953, uh, an acre for the proposed trail easement. Um, you add a market adjustment, which Mr. Dewan was unable to do because his appraisal is from a top prior timeframe. And you come up with a, an equal amount of $250,000. And I can send you, I can send you my, um, my notes on that. Send those to Andrea and she can forward those on.
Is that then the basis for the, um, zero financial impact in the, uh, committee report?
You know, I, I think that's where, when John is filling that out, we, we had discussions of, hey, he asked, you know, where I was in the process and we went through the, through the code, was looked at what 35561 talks about. And, um, I believe so, but I believe he can verify that.
Michelle? And followed by Steve.
Uh, thank you. So, um, uh, Dan, was there any talk about the possibility? You know, I know that the bond for the state to possibly buy the property then from Sina Hudson, you know, was put on hold due to the pandemic this year. Um, is there talk about the city being reimbursed later or possibly for this property? When the state, if the state were to purchase the property?
That discussion was not had. Uh, we were talking about what we needed to do in the, in the very near future. What to, you know, respond to the request of Corey Waters to, um, uh, sell that, um, the road. And then also respond to our need, which was to retain the permanent easement of, um, the new trail.
Okay, thank you.
Andrea, have you sent that? I don't have it yet. You're muted. You're muted, Andrea.
I did say I sent it. I did send it. Uh, it's just a large file, so it will take a second.
Steve Shabbat, followed by, uh, Patrick O'Reilly.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, unless the value of this property is astronomical, you know, that, you know, we just couldn't part, part with it. Yeah, I really think it's a moot point. I mean, this is a piece of property, again, you know, I cannot envision that we could ever use it for anything. So I think putting it to a, a better purpose is for the benefit of the city. Um, I think this is really going to attract a lot of people to our area. And this is, you know, this is, this is what we do. This is, you know, we attract people to Kingston. That's what we're good at. This is just another piece in the puzzle here. And, you know, I think it would be silly for us to hold on a piece of property that really has no value to us. Um, you know, it has, you know, I guess it's going to offset with the property we're going to get back, but, you know, even that, you know, I, I think this is a better use for it, is going to be good for the area. Um, both financially and, you know, for, for people to just get out, it's going to make people feel good to have something like this. Um, as Michelle said, you know, someplace to go even in the winter, you can go out and and walk, you know, you know, we're building a good basis of, of things for people to do. And this is what's attracting people to Kingston. You know, I know some people don't think that's such a great idea. Um, I do. I love to see people here. I love to see people coming here because we have attractions like this. It's a good thing. People want to settle here now. They want to bring their families. You know, and I, I hear it all the time. I have a lot of people on my street now and and they talk about it all the time, that there is so much to do here and they love it here. And that's why they came. They did their homework here. You know, this, this is another thing. And we had this discussion recently about the piece of property up uh, by Elmendorf Street. You know, it's, it's a no use to us, so why hang on to it? Um, you know, I, again, I'm in favor of this. You know, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I mean, I, I, I think we'll, we'll be well served by doing this.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Uh, Patrick O'Reilly, followed by Michelle, followed by Tony Davis.
Patrick? Hi, Patrick Wright. Um, Heather, Matt, thanks for coming tonight. My question is, uh,
Patrick, can't hear you.
Uh, my question, can you hear me now? My question is, um, access to the trail. If you park, Heather had mentioned, uh, parking in the, um, Kingston Point parking lot. Uh, will they have to walk all the way back out to the street and around? Or is there going, is there access, uh, across, uh, the property there? I thought it was a privately owned property between Kingston Point and, um, uh, this property. Can you tell me how people from Kingston Point are going to access the trail?
Sure, I can answer that. And I think John might also have a answer too. I saw his hand up. Um, when I was attending the, the Green Line meeting on, uh, a few weeks ago, um, uh, the owner of the Hutten Brickyard, the private, uh, property, they did offer, um, they will be part of the, the daily gate opening and closing. So they've allowed pedestrians to utilize a brick trail, uh, I'm sorry, not brick, um, a mulch path trail so that pedestrians would not have to be walking along the road, but they can, along Delaware Avenue, but they could cut through from Kingston Point Beach to, um, a segment of North Street that's north of Delaware Avenue. And then walk along and then through the Hutten Brickyard property.
Yeah, this is, John, just to, just to add to that, that's correct. The, uh, the, the owner of the Hutten Brickyard will open that, uh, pedestrian gate, uh, daily from, from dawn to dusk. Is our understanding, three sixty, 365 days a year. And that's, that's consistent with, you know, other parts of the Empire State Trail nearby that are only open daylight hours.
And we have some kind of guarantee of that, an easement? What do we have for that guaranteed? That they, uh, don't get upset and just close the gate?
Yeah. No, the, the, well, North Street i- is a public street there, even though it is, it does have that privately owned gate on it currently. Uh, we are in the process of, of, uh, signing an MOA, memorandum of understanding with the Hutten operators, uh, about their responsibilities for opening and closing that gate. And I think one of the conditions will be that if they fail to do so, the ki- the city will uh, then have the, the, uh, the right to open that gate at any time, which we currently already have for, for our purposes.
John, I'm not talking about the gate. I'm talking about the path, the path from Kingston Point um, to
Oh, the, the small
That's what I'm concerned about.
The small mulch path?
Yeah, is that, how is that going to be open and closed? Do we have any guarantees? Um, is there any kind of easement?
Uh, there, there is not an easement today. It exists informally. Um, I think it's, it's on a list of items to be formalized.
What do you mean by formalized?
But, but under, uh, formalizing could involve, uh, dedicating an easement to the public over that area so that, um, the, the rights to use it are, are always there.
But we're not sure that's going to happen?
Um, I'm, I'm not aware of a specific timeline, but it is an objective.
So it's an objective, huh? So we don't know if we really have access uh, to that, uh, trail, except to walk all the way around, which is about probably half a mile or so, would you say?
Uh, the, the, yeah, the mulch path might save you a quarter mile to a half a mile of walking along Delaware.
Along the, along the street.
Yeah, yeah.
And then down north. Yeah. I said, so I, I, I think we need to think about that, everyone, before we, uh, before we vote.
Michelle, you're next.
Um, I just wanted to say, just in response to Alderman Shabbat, you know, yes, I agree that this is, you know, a great project. It's going to go bring people here. Um, my asking the value of it is not, you know, a negative towards the project. It's just that, you know, this is not our street to just give away, you know, without letting the public know what the value is. So that's all I'm just asking. Thank you.
Tony?
Tony Davis here. Two, two things. First off, uh, people are already walking on that roadway back and forth from the Kingston Point in that neighborhood as they visit, uh, the ball field, as they visit Rotary Park, as they visit the Kingston Point. And so, and walking on that road hasn't been a concern and at any other, any other point. Uh, secondly, and as Steve has mentioned, we, this was, we talked about this some years ago, several years ago, when, when it was, um, some people voicing their concerns about uh, redoing the old railroad trails. And we had these questions. And I'm going to say what I said then. We're using all infrastructure that we have here that is sitting there. And we're revising, we're reinventing these old infrastructures that we have, infrastructures that we've had or that's sitting and hasn't been dormant for years and years and years. And we're coming and we're going to use, they're going to be used violently. We're going to have a purpose for it. It's like the, and, and railroad tracks. People are like, oh, it's going to be a problem, blah, blah. People are utilizing them. They're utilizing them. People walking on those trails all the time, biking on those trails. It's going to be the same thing with this old infrastructure that is sitting there that we had no use for. So why not think and revitalize this and let's get a purpose for it? In, instead of just having it sit there that hasn't been used for years and years and years. So I'm going to be a yes vote.
Steve Shabbat? Steve, followed by Dan.
I know, I know. Yeah, John, I know John can't, you know, give a firm answer on coming up with a guarantee. I know that's impossible, that the owners of the Brickyard are going to let us use their property for access to the trail, but, um, I've dealt with them. The city has dealt with them. Um, you know, if they're, if they have said they're going to do it, I see no reason that they, that they'll turn us away. I mean, this is going to be good for them. I mean, this is going to, you know, this is really going to help their business. I can't imagine they would, they would say, we don't want this now. This, you know, this is going to be good for them. You know, the, they've worked with the city already. Um, you know, I would certainly, you know, put my faith that this is, you know, we're going to get a positive response from them, you know, formally, as John says, about using access over their property. Um, you know, I'm, I mean, I feel confident enough that it's, it's not going to change my vote because we don't have it formally. I think the fact that, that they have said it is, is good enough for me at this point. Yes, things could change, but, you know, I really don't think so, based on the dealings we've had with them down there. So, you know, again, you know, I, I'll be voting for it.
Yeah. Randy Scott Childress?
Yeah, I would like to second what Tony Davis was saying. We've got this, um, asset sitting there, but it's not being used and, uh, transferring it. Uh, because of the, uh, rough equivalence of value, uh, it ends up costing us nothing. Uh, this isn't a tax issue either. So, you know, uh, the other issues relating to accessibility are things that we can take up later. They're a separate issue. The owners of the Hutten Brickyards are not party to this, um, agreement. So, uh, I, I think it's time for us to move forward with this.
Are there other questions? I, I would just summarize if I could. Uh, Steve, I'll come to you next. Uh, the letter from Dan Baker, which Andrea just sent out, the, this, he summarizes it in one statement. The value of the easement the city is receiving is equal to the value of the street and real property that is transferring to Corey Waters LLC. And that's been to mention that $250,000. So these are your words, John. I hope I represented them correctly. Steve Shabbat?
Steve? Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion on this. I'm ready to make a motion on this.
Okay, well, let me, let me read the, the committee report, okay? I will read the committee report from engineering. It reads, adopting a finding that the length of North Street is surplus property and authorizing the mayor to negotiate sale of this street, approximately six acres, acres of land to Corey Waters LLC or their successor in title in exchange for a public trail access easement over the alignment of the Hudson River Brickyard Trail to be granted to the city by Corey Waters LLC or their successor in title. So there's a motion. Steve, you, uh, Steve, are you making a mo- okay. And a second, Randy, uh, Scott Childress? Okay, call for a vote. All in favor? One, two, three, four. The vote is five to zero in, in favor, so the resolution passes. So thank you, uh, Matt and Heather and Dan and, uh, John for, for being with us this evening. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We can, uh,
Alderman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, we appreciate your time and, and consideration of our requests. We, uh, thank you so much for your decision tonight.
Yep, we look forward to working with you more.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Heather and Matt. Okay, I'd like to move now to, uh, a budgetary transfer from, uh, wastewater treatment facility that unfortunately I neglected to bring forward last month. It's a budgetary transfer of $7,100, uh, from the pump station regular pay to various, uh, facilities within, within parks. $7,150. I asked for a motion on this. Randy? A second. Steve Shabbat? All in favor? One, two, three, five, zero. Okay, so we come now to the last two items which involve, uh, Kevin, Kevin Bryant, uh, why don't we deal with the one issue that before we go into executive session, uh, 40 Conde Street? You want to brief us on that, Kevin? You want to brief us on that, Kevin?
Yeah. So basically at one point in time, when the council transferred properties, uh, surplus properties, they would put in uh, additional restrictions in a deed. Basically saying that once the, uh, property is going to be transferred, it would require a city approval. And so now this is just a follow-up to that.
Any comments, questions? So the Corporation Council is asking to authorize the release of restrictions in the deed for Ca-, 40 Conde Street, requiring that the property cannot be sold in the future without common council consent. Ask for a motion? Okay, Michelle Hirsch? Second by, uh, Steve Schabett? A third for Randy Scott Childers, okay? All in favor? Signify please. One, two, three, four, five. Thank you. And unless I'm mistaken, the only remaining agenda item is a request from the Corporation Council for an executive, uh, executive session.
Doug, there is a matter Luther versus the City of Kingston I'd like to discuss with the council in executive session. For, uh, settlement purposes.
Okay, can, is someone, uh, can make a motion to this?
Motion that we move to attorney-client session.
Okay, hold, hold on just a moment here. Uh, okay, motion? For attorney-client session?
Doug, that's a motion for executive session.
Executive. Uh, uh, executive session. And a second, Steve Schabett? All in favor? Steve, you're, Steve, okay, five, zero. Okay, I think we can move to executive session. Uh,
You have the, uh, number. I already texted it to you with the access code. Just make sure you turn off your camera. Make sure yourself you turn off your microphone. If you have any problems, text or call me.
Doug, you need to turn off your mic. Doug, turn off your camera, too.
Okay, are we all here? John, are you, John too? You with us?
Yes, hi Doug.
Okay. All right. So, uh, Kevin, you want to give the recommendation again and then we can ask for a motion? You're muted?
Sorry about that. I, um, I am recommending to the council that they approve a settlement amount in the amount of $20,000, um, in the Luther versus City of Kingston Personal Injury Action. So the, the, uh, committee report would read, approve proposed settlement of the Luther versus City of Kingston Personal Injury Action in the amount of
So the the uh committee report would read, approve proposed settlement of the Luther versus City of Kingston Personal Injury Action in the amount of $20,000 and authorize the execution of any and all documents necessary to effect said settlement. I'm sorry, to effectuate said settlement.
Okay. Uh Steve, are you making the motion? Steve Schabett, is that a motion or a question? You're muted.
That's a motion.
Okay, motion by Steve Schabett. Second, Michelle Hirsch? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Michelle, you made the motion, so I'm counting you as a yes vote. Five, zero. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Uh there being no